Call the meeting to order, all rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, all members are present, approval of the agenda, is there any changes to the agenda? Counsel, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe, second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Approval of the minutes of the November twentieth twenty twenty four regular meeting. Is there any questions? Or corrections or any clarification needed within those minutes? Hearing nothing, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the November twentieth meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Heidi, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. This now brings us to our public open forum, is there anyone that would like to speak to the counsel? Is there anyone that would like to speak to the counsel? Call a third time, is there anyone that would like to speak to the counsel? Seeing known our public open forum is now closed, we'll then move on to public hearings. We will recess the regular council meeting and enter into our public hearing. We have one public hearing before us this evening in accordance with the official mailed and public notice in the matter of proposed budget and levy for twenty twenty five. It is our intention that everyone has the opportunity to be heard. If you wish to speak, please sign in on the signup sheet at the back of the room. Procedure is as follows, presentation by staff followed by questions of staff, then public input, raise your hand. When recognized by the mayor, approach the podium and state your name and address for the record. State your comments and position. No one will be allowed to speak a second time until everyone has had a chance to be heard. First, we will hear questions for clarification. Second, public in favor of the proposal. Third, public speaking against the proposal. After everyone who wishes to speak has had the opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed. After closure of the public hearing, the council will deliberate and take action as appropriate. Members of the audience do not participate in the council's discussion unless the majority of the council concedes to hear additional information or questions. The hearing is now in session.
Good evening. So as you know, this is the public meeting for the presentation of the budget for twenty twenty five. And this, as you said, will give the public an opportunity to be heard and to ask any questions. So first, I'm going to go through a summary of the budget, I'm not going to go through all sixty-three pages of it. I'm just going to break it into sections. On your, in the budget worksheet or packet that you got, on the page that's called twenty twenty five budget revenue and expense comparison, that's the, that's the groupings that I'm going to address tonight. Part one is the general fund, which is the general operations of the city, including police, fire, general administration, planning and zoning, streets, parks, and related operations that are under the general purview of general government. This budget saw an operational increase over the prior year of four point five six percent. Factors that play into fluctuations in the general fund include wages, insurance, utilities, and other general operational expenses. As you know, our wages are set, the union contracts were in the second year of a three-year contract, and so then we just had to plug those numbers in. Insurance, we're kind of at the mercy of the insurance companies, although we did go out to bids and we're favorable in there as well. Part two of the, of the budget is the special revenue fund section. This includes the library, the fire department, the EDA, the airport, ambulance, senior center, and hospital fund, as well as some grant funds, stormwater utility, sales tax. So those are kind of more individualized, that are not general operations of the city, but individualized departments. Those funds remained fairly consistent with a few exceptions, which are related to capital improvements, because this year we are purchasing an ambulance in twenty twenty five, we had to order that in twenty twenty three, it will be here in twenty twenty five. And so there was an increase there, but then we had a reduction in the stormwater utility fund, because we are not doing a project, which this last year we did that project at the truck stop. So this actually has an overall decrease in expenses in the special revenue fund of seven point six seven percent. Part three is the TIF district funds, there's three open TIF districts and one closed district in the city. This funding is, and funding is essentially a pass-through. The total budget saw an increase in TIF payments to be paid due to the completion of a TIF project, so as those taxes come in, they get returned to the developer. However, the overall TIF funds reduced because of the completion of a project. So it's not a real fair comparison on the TIF, because of that completion of a project resulted in a huge reduction of eighty-nine percent, so. And then part four is debt, total debt is down by one percent in twenty twenty five due to one bond dropping off, but you can expect an increase in future years due to the new bond coming online for twenty twenty five. So although we don't have, aren't projecting an increase this year, there will be an increase for twenty twenty six when we start paying off that new bond. And then the final section is capital projects. And the total of capital projects saw a large increase due to the city taking on the twenty twenty five Burch and Pine Street reconstruction, along with a box hanger project at the airport and then the anticipated building improvement project that we're talking about tonight. Capital projects see the biggest swings every year due to planning projects in one year and then actually building them out in the following year or two. The anticipated project expense increase is eight point nine million dollars due to planned projects that will be funded through a bond issue, grant funding, and utility. So the grand total for all expenses for twenty twenty five is eighteen thousand seven sixty-nine four ninety-seven. So that is a very significant increase simply because of that large project that we're going to take on. The proposed budget, however, to support it is two point six eight four million, which is broken down with one point nine six nine seven thirty-one for the general fund, one eighty-eight five for special revenue, and five hundred and twenty-six thousand for debt service. This is the levy adopted at the preliminary budget, this is an increase of seven percent in the levy over the prior year. As you know, every one percent is about twenty-five thousand and some change to the city when put against our tax capacity. The other thing that I just wanted to point out would be on the page prior to that page in your budget, you always like to see where does Sock Center fall in the tax rate trends compared to other cities. We're still right in the middle with the lowest tax rate, St. Anthony, and the highest tax rate in the county at Wake Park, and we fall of those thirty right at number sixteen. And then also I have the county, city, and school rates, and then the city's rate all the way back to two thousand and six. So you kind of see the trend. We're kind of holding our own as far as the tax rate that gets applied. It's just that it is more money that we're levying simply because of growth that we see in the city. Everybody was given their property tax notice and what it specifically meant to their particular parcel. That's a, it's a combination of our increase in levy, the school, the county, the watershed, and also any increase or decrease in the value of their property. All of those things factor into their rate. So, did anybody have any questions regarding the specific budget numbers that I gave to you tonight?
Questions? Guess not.
Good.
Then I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone here that wants, has questions, needs clarification, or wants to bolt in favor or against the proposal, the budget presentation? Is there anyone that needs clarification, wants to speak in favor or against the budget proposal? Call a third time, is there anyone that needs clarification? Wants to speak in favor, speak against the budget proposal? Counsel, have any last-minute questions, comments? Okay, then our public hearing is now closed. We will reconvene our regular council meeting, go into reports, EDA report.
So the EDA met today in regular session at noon, that was a regularly scheduled meeting. A couple of things on the agenda, they discussed the progress of the QuickTrip property. Phase one is complete, the closing is honored before February first of twenty twenty five. So we still have some time to pull that together, as well as continuing to work with, with Tractor Supply. That's the property next to Walmart, there's some, some property line to determine exactly where their property line is going to go, and then also some discussion about the roadway that's going to go in there. We also reviewed a potential small city development program grant for residential rehab for low and moderate income housing. This would actually be a twenty twenty six funding, but people in that, in that category would be able to get grant money to, to do code deficiency of their house, insulation, windows, roofs, those types of things. Same type of grant we did back in two thousand and six and seven. This would just extend it citywide versus in that specific area. We also looked at the Brownfield grants, that's a grant opportunity that's out right now at the state that, to redevelop, to redevelop property with possible soils issues. There's a lot of different kinds of businesses that have soils issues, it's not just gas stations and dry cleaners and photo labs, there's other kinds of businesses that impact the soil. And so we're looking at what potential development opportunities we have where this grant would help them. And then we also discussed a potential housing TIF project for Main Street or Apartments, phase three. And so that would be north of the existing apartment. We're discussing with them a twenty-four unit project up there, so it would build out the rest of theirs. And then also we looked at the lot sale progress at Author's Edition, we have nine of the nineteen lots that are sold. We have no action for the council tonight from the EDA.
Questions, comments? Okay, park board report.
The park board met in regular session Tuesday, December third, which was last night. They received their annual report, or their monthly reports from Public Works and then the campground activity. They also discussed briefly the Tower View Ball Field improvements, that is ongoing, working with the baseball association and the school of improvement to those baseball fields. They did make a recommendation on the fee schedule for the camper cabins, and the council will be adopting the fee schedule at the next meeting, but this was their last meeting, and so they did make a recommendation to that. They discussed a little bit the potential improvements by the Freedom Rock. They reviewed the conservation park shoreline, Conservation Club is in, approached us about what can be done to the shoreline at Conservation Park to make it more accessible to fishing. And then also they'll be working on the recommendation for trail improvements for twenty twenty five. So we have nothing for tonight's meeting, their recommendation will be at the next meeting.
Okay, questions, concerns? Okay, then we'll move on to our action items, seven A, approved resolution twenty twenty four dash ninety-four, adopting twenty twenty five levy.
So this levy that I'm presenting tonight is the levy that you adopted on September fourth. So I brought that levy forward, as I said in the, in the public hearing, the general fund, one million nine sixty-nine seven thirty-one, special revenue funds, one hundred and eighty-eight thousand five hundred, and debt service funds, five hundred and twenty-six thousand, for a total twenty twenty five levy of two million six eighty-four two thirty-one. And that's in front of you as resolution twenty twenty four dash ninety-four.
Questions, last-minute comments? Do I have a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty four dash ninety-four?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Heidi, second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven B, approved resolution twenty twenty four dash ninety-five, adopting twenty twenty five budget.
I won't go through all the individual line items, but you have them in front of you. That's for the general fund, the special revenue fund, the TIF fund, the debt service funds, and the project funds. The one thing that is not on there that was a last-minute add was the twenty twenty five box hanger. So that's actually one million dollars higher, so the total, all funds and expenses is, is eighteen million seven sixty-nine four ninety-seven sixty-one, and that is resolution twenty twenty four dash ninety-five.
Questions, comments? Do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash ninety-five?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion by Sheldon, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Joe.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven C, approved resolution twenty twenty four dash ninety-six, awarding bid membrane roofing.
So the replacement of the membrane roof, that's the flat roofs, at City Hall and the Civic Arena have been on the planning stages with preliminary estimates obtained and rewrote the specifications. The city council approved the specifications and authorized that bids be sought at its October second, twenty twenty four meeting. Bids were advertised on the city website, city Facebook, the Sock Herald, and the Commerce and Finance Magazine. Bids were publicly opened and tabulated on November thirteenth, and the bid included two options. One was to replace the existing ballast roof, which is with rocks, with an option to upgrade to an adhered roof option. The benefit of the adhered, adhered roof over the ballast roof is the roof will last additional seven to ten years, along with eliminating the weight of the rocks on the roofs of the structures. So you have two sections in your, in your report, the ballast options go all the way from three hundred and three thousand to eight hundred and one thousand, and the adhered option goes from three hundred and seventy thousand to eight hundred and ten thousand. So you have all of the bids in front of you there. We are recommending that we proceed with the adhered option for the two reasons of the weight reduction and the roof lifeline, or lifetime that we would get from those roofs. So what we have in front of you is resolution twenty twenty four dash ninety-six, awarding the bid to the membrane roof project for the adhered option to Buttwiler's Do-All for three hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars.
Questions, concerns?
I think for the difference between the, the three seventy for the adhered versus the three oh three for the ballast option and the lowest bids, it's worth the, the ten years for, you know, less than ten thousand dollars a year of life to extend it.
Any other comments?
I think Heidi said what I was feeling as well.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash ninety-six, awarding the bid for the adhered option?
I'll make a motion to go with a little bit on the adhered option.
Okay.
I'll second.
Sheldon, seconded by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven D, approved resolution twenty twenty four dash ninety-seven, awarding the bid for the shingled roofing.
So the replacement of the shingle roof, which is the main section of City Hall plus the hose tower and a couple other little ancillary areas of City Hall, that had been in the planning stations, stages, and preliminary estimates were obtained and specifications written, the city council approved those on October second. We advertised on the city website, the Facebook, and the Sock Herald, as well as sending out requests to all the people that we knew in the area that did that type of a project. We received five bids for the project, all the way from forty-nine thousand seven fifty up to eighty-four thousand five hundred. And we are recommending that the city proceed with a low bid, that's in front of you, resolution twenty twenty four dash ninety-seven, to St. Rosa Lumber for forty-nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Questions, concerns? Do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash ninety-seven?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe.
I'll second.
Second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven E, approved resolution twenty twenty four dash ninety-eight, awarding bid for air handling unit.
So this is the rooftop air handling unit here at City Hall, it's, it's about the size of a cargo container, so kind of get an idea of what that looks like up there. We did the same process with getting out the specifications, the city council approved it, and we advertised on the website, Facebook, the Herald, and then the Finance and Commerce Magazine. We did have options in there, one was for a natural gas unit for efficiency, and also with a control unit that the computer to monitor and control various areas of the building, which is our preferred method, because then you can, instead of one size fits all for the whole building, you can turn certain areas down, especially with having the police department in here and the building occupied different hours of the day, that'll give us better control. So that is the option that we were looking at. We had five bidders for the project, and they went all the way from two forty-one six eighty-three up to three ninety-four five forty-five. And so we're looking at awarding the bid to Ellingson's, Ellingson's Plumbing and Heating for two forty-one six eighty-three. And that is the option with natural gas and with the computerized control. And that's resolution twenty twenty four dash ninety-seven.
Questions, comments?
I'm kind of concerned about Ellingson's. I had them put in a furnace for me, and it had a cracked heat exchanger, and the guy missed it entirely. I had to have somebody else come in and do the job over. I'm not sure their quality is there. And I filed a complaint with the Better Business Bureau when I did it. I don't know, maybe they've changed, maybe they've got new people, I have no idea.
Do we have, I am sure this, the, the bid included some sort of a warranty on? Yes, they, they all come with warranty work and performance bond.
Right.
You'll need it, okay.
So we'll make sure that we have the warranty.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I think the natural gas, you know, makes sense, you know, it was part of the conversation, we went to bid, and then I am familiar with this computerized control unit, we see something similar with what we have at my employer. And so, and we actually work with Ellingson on that, and so I'm familiar with that software, and we've been successful in that.
Okay, any other comments? Do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash ninety-seven?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Joe, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Heidi.
Heidi?
I'll second.
You two fighting, no worries.
I guess.
Okay, second by Heidi, call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven F, approved resolution twenty twenty four dash ninety-nine, authorizing purchase of an eight hundred megahertz radio.
So the city ambulance is each have an eight hundred megahertz radio with each rig, which are actually quite dated. One of the units has failed, and so we reached out to Granite Electronics, who gives, who can give us the state pricing on that. And they, they gave us a bid for five thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eight cents. So we're looking to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash ninety-nine, authorizing the purchase of that radio.
Questions, concerns?
This is for all of the?
This is for one.
Oh, this is for one.
Are the other ones just as old as the one that failed?
Yeah, we'll be working on that. This one failed, so we need to get that one taken care of right away.
Okay.
How soon can, how soon is it gonna?
How soon will it be here?
Okay.
There you go, thirty days.
Okay, hold him to it.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash ninety-nine?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Sheldon. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven G, approved resolution twenty twenty four dash one hundred, authorizing purchase of power cot.
So if you recall, in November of twenty twenty-three, we authorized the placement of an order for a twenty twenty five ambulance. It is scheduled to come in twenty twenty five in the window of June to December, so we kind of have a, a window of opportunity there. So that is in the, in place, but then as you know, we do have power cots in there, so we're looking for the new power cot for that as well. And so they went out for bids, and they went to P S V Premier Specialty Vehicles and Lifeline. And after trade, Lifeline has the low bid of sixty thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars. So we're looking to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash one hundred, authorizing the purchase of that power cot.
Questions?
Are they both the same cot? Are they both the same cot that we're getting for that price?
They're both a striper cot, yeah, striper cot.
Okay. Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash one hundred?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Diane, do I have?
I'll second.
Second by Heidi. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Seven H, approved advancement of E M T.
Kathy Schuford, ambulance director, has submitted a request to advance Jackie Ostendorf to E M T B level two, and her, her comments are effective December nineteenth. I would like to recommend Jackie Ostendorf be promoted from E M T B level one to E M T B level two for the Sock Center ambulance service, along with the pay increase according to the city's pay policy. Jackie started with her crew on December nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, she continues to stay active on the crew, taking call and backup. And as you know, our ambulance crew has a five-year, you know, your five-year at this pay rate, then you advance to the next pay rate, so she's at that five-year window. So we're looking to approve the advancement of Jackie Ostendorf to E M T B level two, effective December nineteenth, twenty twenty four.
Comments, concerns? Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion, motion to approve the advancement?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Diane, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Joe. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against. Unfinished business, building improvements?
So this was the building improvements that you just went through, I feel like we were kind of really going to town there on spending money. But anyway, with that, with that project and those bids out there, then, then there's some other potential projects that could be incorporated into the same bond issue. This total bond that we just came out to had a total of seven thirty-four, six thirty-three, that factors in permits, contingency, and the transfer in of some ARPA money, so. That was, and so we identified some additional projects. You typically, if you're going to bond to make it worth the money to bond, you're getting a little bit closer to a million dollars than the seven hundred and fifty. We just kind of identified some projects that might be considered, one would be the library windows, those original windows are from nineteen oh two, for the last ten years, we've been wrestling with how to get those windows replaced. There is a federal mandate that we have to have controlled access door system in the P D. You know, that might be something we want to look at. There's also the flooring in the P D, and then there's a membrane roof at the senior center, there's carpet in this building, there's things related to the specific buildings that we could include. I'm not asking you to make a decision tonight, I just wanted to put it on your radar, that maybe these are the things we could look at. If there's something you think we could, then we would get a little bit more specific on what those costs might be. I'm not necessarily advocating for all of it, I just kind of put it in here, kind of in the order that we kind of see as important. And you kind of take that and noodle it around, and, and we'll be, we'll be in touch to, maybe at the next meeting to talk a little bit more in depth about what that might look like. So I have no action on that tonight, just kind of getting in front of you.
Any comments or anything on this?
I think it's my first inclination, when you said the library windows, that, you're right, I feel like that's been discussed for?
Ever.
Yeah, right?
Forever.
So.
And I think, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Joe. I was going to say, I would wonder if these P D controlled access doors, if it's going to be a federal mandate, I would wonder if there would maybe eventually be some grants with that that might apply just for doors.
Generally not.
So much for that then.
I know one thing with the P D flooring, that definitely is breaking up and it's not good.
Yeah.
Senior center membrane roof, it's, you know, it's about the same as what City Hall and the hockey arena. And made in upper-level carpet, it's original. It's been there for twenty years, kind of asks a lot for that, so.
I think a big part of this too is the fact that we're, we're going to be bonding, we earmarked one point two million, even if we did all these, we're at a million dollars. We know nothing gets cheaper as we, we delay and we wait, gives us an opportunity to get this done, you know, now versus waiting for increased costs or borrowing costs or whatever it may be, or we just never get around to doing it. Now again, whether we decide to take action on it at any point, that's, that's for a later discussion, but I think it's worth exploring these things, and, you know, the library windows, obviously that's kind of a big deal when you got, when we got a hundred and twenty-two-year-old windows.
Yeah.
One of the things is, is if we add these on to the bond from what the projects we're doing now, it might help us get a better rate, right? When we go up for bond?
Right.
So. I know that she's asking us just for consideration, but I've been hearing a lot of positive. I'm just going to make the motion that we add those five into it.
I agree.
And how about I get some, a little bit better numbers too?
Yeah.
Before you make a final statement.
So do we want to wait on that and maybe get some numbers at our next meeting, and then we can?
Can, if you, you know, we're not going out to bond until when, for the other project?
April?
April, yeah, so we have a little time, but I definitely think we should need, we should look at all five of them.
I, yeah.
General consent?
And I'll rescind my motion, that way it's not on record.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? We have no new business, we have the consent agenda, we have a schedule of claims, unpaid claims of sixty-four thousand three hundred and five dollars and forty-two cents for a total of the same. We have a resolution number twenty twenty four dash one oh one. We have, uh, resolution number twenty twenty-four dash one oh one, accepting contributions of a hundred and sixty dollars and forty cents from the Men's Card Playing Group to be allocated to the senior center. Two hundred dollars from Jeanette and Vern Pfeffer to be allocated to the police department. Twenty-five hundred dollars from Walmart Shop With A Cop to be allocated to the police department. A hundred dollars from First Lutheran Church to be allocated to the police department. Uh, sod at a value of three hundred and sixty-eight dollars from Uppis Sod and Landscaping to be, uh, allocated to the Fire Department Memorial, and donation on a repair of the reel, three hundred dollars from Center Auto Incorporated to be allocated to the Fire Department. And on behalf of the council and the city, I want to thank those groups and people for their donations. Uh, we have gambling application for exempt permit requests from the SOC Center Lions Club for a raffle on February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five at the SOC Center American Legion. Is there any questions or concerns about the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Motion to, I'll second.
Motion by Joe, second by Diane. Call the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five in favor, none against.
I have nothing.
First meeting of the year.
First meeting is January is a Thursday.